Before we get started into the agenda, I'd like to read a memo into the record from Commissioner Les Miller. Please be advised that due to a family emergency, I will not be able to attend the Comprehensive Plan Amendments Adoption Transmittal Public Hearing. Please read the reason for my absence into the record. This is the Board of County Commissioners' public hearing on amendments to future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Board of County Commissioners is holding public hearings this evening for the consideration of the transmittal of two Comprehensive Plan Amendments to the State Land Planning Agency and other agencies for review. If an amendment is approved for transmittal, a second public hearing and final vote will be held before the amendment is adopted. And our first transmittal public hearing, I will turn the meeting over to Tony Garcia from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tony Garcia, Planning Commission. The first amendment of the two before you this evening is HCCPA 1801. It's a future land use map change. The proposed change is on 19.2 acres from residential four to light industrial planned. Mr. Randy Krancheck will make the presentation before you now.
I need the first one. You have a part one? 1801. All right. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Randy Krancheck, Planning Commission staff. This is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-01. It's in the Thonona Sassa planning area. It's on County Road 579, also known as Mango Road, just north of Interstate 4. It's privately initiated map amendment, again, in the Thonona Sassa community plan area and in the rural area. You can see the site right here, and here is the interchange at Interstate 4. Again, an aerial site outlined in the pink, urban service line, and interchange at I-4 with a number of RV dealers and things of that nature in this area. So it's on 19 acres, and the current future land use classification is residential four. Here, down at the interchange, you see community mixed-use 12, you see some suburban mixed-use six to the west of that. This large blue area here, to the east of the site, which is adjacent to the site, is the Taylor Road landfill, which still has some ongoing activity. And the proposal is for a light industrial planned category. The planned simply means that when they come in for a rezoning, they will need to do a site plan development, a PD, and we will look at the uses proposed and go forward from there. So this is an aerial of Cascrete Concrete Company, a large concrete company which is directly across the street from this site. They did not want to be designated, for some reason, light industrial. In the plan update some years back, they wanted to remain residential four. They're certainly legally conforming, but it's definitely a light industrial use. Again, here is Cascrete. Here is the site and the interchange, again, at Interstate 4. So what would the impact be on 19 acres of property? As it's currently residential four, it allows up to 76 dwelling units. There is water and sewer available in this area. There's a water line and a sewer line running in front of the site on County Road 579, even though it's in the rural area, and that's primarily because of problems in the past associated with the Taylor Road landfill and the need for potable water and sewer service. Non-residential development. This site is currently approved for some retail uses, not 175,000 square feet, but upwards of 100,000 square feet. Under light industrial planned, they would do no residential, and with a .5 Florida ratio, they could potentially do up to 418,000 square feet of light industrial uses. So the staff and the Planning Commission found this consistent with the Comprehensive Plan based on compatibility with the surrounding area, a number of policies there, and also there is a language in the Thonona Sassa Community Plan that was adopted in 1995 by the Board of County Commissioners, which adopted a land use policy allowing commercial uses or non-residential uses south of Pruitt Road, between Pruitt and I-4, and again, that's primarily due to the impact of Taylor Road landfill on this area. We talked briefly at the briefing last time. We had no agency objections. The FDOT had expressed some comments, put forth some comments regarding Interstate 4 and Interstate 75. The applicant's representative will speak to that during his presentation, as he had communication with FDOT staff. And the recommendation from the Planning Commission, again, was found consistent, that was found consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, and we would look, ask that the Board consider transmittal to the State Planning Agency. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yes, we do have a question. Commissioner White, you recognize.
Thank you. My question is really only indirectly related to the issue at hand. Did we end up with a RES 4 designation outside of the urban service area because of the presence of the water lines that you mentioned?
No.
Is that more of a legacy?
It's an enclave out there as well.
Okay.
There are some, there are a number of lots out in that area that are small, that are more along the densities of a RES 4-type plan category.
Is it, is it an area that predates the comp plan or something like that?
In a way, yes. You could say that.
Okay, okay. And secondly, I think you touched on this in your presentation, but a commercial, a light industrial, rather, facility would be required to hook up to the water and sewer services?
Well, it's in the rural service area, and that would be up to public utilities in this instance, and I, that would be their decision at time of permitting. My assumption would be that since it is there, they would want a light industrial facility to hook up to it.
And that would be done at the, a potential rezoning phase of this, right?
That would be a function of the utility concurrency regulations. Generally, that would require in the rural area that they utilize well in septic. However, if there is a public health or environmental issue that couldn't be rectified by hooking up to public utilities, that is, that is something that's available both in the comp plan and in the code.
And that's done at the staff review level?
That's done at the permitting level typically, yeah.
Permitting, which is, which is a staff process.
That's correct.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
Don't see any questions, others at this time? Is the applicant here? You've got three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioner. My name is Hung Mai, 14031 North Dale Mary, Tampa 33618, representing the applicant for the CPA 1801. First of all, let me thank you for your time today, and also on behalf of the applicant and myself, we thank you Planning Commission staff for reviewing the CPA. Planning Commission staff did an excellent job, and you have a report, you know, on your backup material. I don't have a whole lot, you know, further to adding to the fighting, however, I got, you know, some relevant information, would like to convey it to the Board. The subject property was previously ZOMPD 050215 and 090048, which allow for 159,600 square feet general commercial retail with some restricted yield. The property approximately half mine of I-4 and one and a half mine east of I-75, and on the Cali Road 579, with the Cali Collector Road. The access onto the property will be the Cali Road, not a DOT road. As you know, along the east side of the Cali, the Cali-Taylor Road landfill, which is not desirable for residential development and any high-end retail commercial development, is permitted in 2005 and 2009. This is not an urban, you know, expansion. Cali water and sewer are available on the same side of the property and available capacity for hookup, allowing the Cali gaining revenue on your investment already underground. So we will hook up into the Cali water and sewer system. The CPA 1801 meets the Thonona Sassa Community Plan that was adopted by BOCC in 1995, would allow commercial yield south of Pruitt Road to I-4. Randy already touching Cascrete manufacturing around on the west side, and on the south side, you've got a lot of development, i.e. the Tampa Gateway, Gator 4, transport trucking, Ivy, Lazy Day Ivy Superstore. The light industrial plan, either smart land yield category, apply for this particular area. Regarding the comment from the DOT, I spoke with Mr. Dan Santos.
Thank you. Sorry. Three minutes is up. It goes fast.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll now move into the public hearing part of the meeting. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of CPA 18-01? Good evening.
Hi, Karen Mohasky. I am in favor of this transfer over or change to the light industry. As Commissioner White mentioned, you know, RES 4 so near I-4, you know, always creates problems, creates congestions, and as similar to the Comprehensive Plan where we have, you know, we want to have development and residential, commercial use on that one mile to I-75, I think applying this to I-4 would also be a very smart move for Hillsborough County, since we all know that, you know, I-4 is a congested road. So I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 18-01? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Motion for transmittal.
Okay, we have a motion to move for transmittal, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you very much, and we'll now move to the next item.
Next item is HCCPA 1803. This is a future land use map change. Proposed change on approximately 44 acres from agricultural estate, one to two and a half to residential one. Presentation by Ms. Krista Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff. I am presenting CPA 1803. It is a future land use map amendment. It's privately initiated, and it's located in the rural area. It's also within the Thonona Sassa Community Plan boundary, which is outlined in red to the right. More specifically, it's north of Joe Ebert Road and west of County Road 579. The site is a 44-acre portion of the 126-acre tract. It's currently pasture land, and it's surrounded by, to the south, you can see some suburban scale and semi-rural scale development; to the west, more suburban scale, I mean suburban and rural scale development. To the right, the site was an active mine that is now being transitioned into a residential development. The adopted future land use map designates a property agricultural estate, one unit per 2.5 acres. As you can see, to the north and east, it is agricultural estate predominantly, but to the south and to the west, it's predominantly residential one. The applicant's requesting a change to residential one to recognize the existing and established semi-rural community surrounding it. Currently, the site allows 17 dwelling units. The change would allow an additional 27 units for a total of 44 dwelling units. The site does not meet locational criteria. In the event that a waiver were achieved, they could receive up to 30,000 square feet of non-residential use. The site was reviewed for consistency by the Planning Commission and found that it was RES 1 would allow compatible development with the semi-rural development pattern in the surrounding area. It would also recognize the existing rural community adjacent to the site. Further, the strategies of the Thonona Sassa's Community Plan to retain semi-rural character would be furthered. It would maintain the residential density envisioned by the plan of one acre or greater, and also the retention of the current location of the urban service boundary. It was reviewed by a number of review agencies. No objections were received, and some review agencies noted sufficient road capacity and school capacity. Based on these findings, the Planning Commission recommends that CPA 1803 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough's Comprehensive Plan and forwards that recommendation to your Board.
Great. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
And I see no questions at this time. Is the applicant here? Great. You have three minutes.
Good evening. William Malloy, 325 South Boulevard. There's not a lot of information I can add to what staff just very confidently presented. I just would like to stress that the request today, this parcel that we're looking at is actually about 165 acres. We're asking for this change today just for the southern 44, based on, you know, our recognition and acknowledgement that there needs to be a transition from the R1 to the agricultural estate to the north, and that's why we limited it to just the southern portion, south of the Tico Eastman. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Very good. I see no questions at this time. We'll move into the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of CPA 18-03?
In favor?
Mm-hmm. Anyone wishing to speak opposed to CPA 18-03? Please come forward. Hello again.
Karen Mohasky. So I am opposed to this for the reason that our 2025 plan is not, does not have this as the lower density of RES 1. And, hold on just, I did print this out, but I forgot it. Okay. There are a couple of things in our Comprehensive Plan. Oh, my gosh. And I apologize, this isn't working for me. Objection four, the rural area will provide area for long-term agriculture use on large lot, low-density rural residential use, which can exist without the threat of urban or suburban encroachment, with the goal that no more than 20% of all population growth within the county will occur in the rural area. And this is important because during a very large CPA adjustment for Lithia Pine Crest, your commissioner, you know, you voted for this, and it was for property rights. So in the same area, there are property owners, Mr. Parker will be speaking, that, again, he's being encroached upon. So as we are protecting property rights, all property rights should also have that same protection against encroachment if you live in the rural area. Another part of our Comprehensive Plan is that, objection two, timing of growth, to imagine the timing of new development to coordinate with provision of infrastructure, transportation, transit services, other public services such as schools, recreation facilities, and in a financial feasible manner. Yes, this isn't going to be in our urban service area, and there are schools, but again, timeliness. We do not need this timeliness at this point in time, maybe in the future, as the Comprehensive Plan will adjust as you update it. But this goes inside with, you know, why increase to the RES 1 when the RES 2 is all in that area, RES 2.5, I correct? And that having a more denser location or even an option for future isn't needed at this time. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to CPA 18-03? Good evening.
Good evening. How are you? My name is Steve Parker, and I reside at 10926 Schooly Road in Thonona Sassa, and I just want to go back a little bit and mention to all of you all that I stood here several years ago with this commission. In fact, Rhonda Storms sat right there. I couldn't miss her. But anyway, the, when we, when this landowner and several other landowners with thousands of acres across the street from this land came here with high-priced land use attorneys, Judy James being one of them, and we discussed the fact of what the impact was going to be on all that, those people with that land, including this property, that at the time was 1 to 5, they wanted it to go 1 to 1. I see part of it has been since reduced to 1 to 2.5. The problem is, and this is where it's a moral obligation for you to realize that what are we going to do without county water and sewer? It's going to be wells and septic tanks on not only this property, but as soon as you approve this to, from 1 to 2.5 to 1 to 1, those people on the east side of 579, those thousands of acres, are going to be here wanting that change from you as well, and you can't deny it. And it was turned down back then. I spoke here along with a lot of my other residents, and you guys denied it for the simple reason that they could not explain what they were going to do with the environmental problems. The only one that complied with the land use at the time was a gentleman by the name of Mr. Henry. He owned Henry Ranch on Lake Thonona Sassa, which is now Stone Lake Estates, and he complied with the 1 to 5 deal. So I just want to point that out to you, that this is a little shell game with landowners. I know I'm not going to get rude here, but that's exactly what's happening. When you approve this, be prepared for all the other landowners to step forward and want the same thing. But at the end of the day, what are you going to do if they put 500 homes on that land and it requires a septic tank and a well for each one? And we've talked about environmental issues here tonight, and even some of these other people with the other property, and it's very concerning in Thonona Sassa. We already have 11 inactive borrow pits out there. We have a sewage dump plant that is just a little bit south of Pruitt Road, where, I'm sorry, north of Pruitt Road, where it's legal and the guy has a permit for septic trucks to come in daily, one right after another, dumping sludge. We've got a gas transmission plant, so I just wanted to ask your consideration on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming down. And I didn't know if the applicant wanted to give a rebuttal. I'm going to close the public hearing now.
Just a few quick points. We do have an opportunity to tap into county water off of 579. It'd have to be master metered, but I hope that alleviates a little bit of the concern that was just presented about wells and septic tanks. And he also mentioned the borrow pits, the inoperative ones that have just been left sitting. My client actually is in subdivision review already for the borrow pit that's just, it would be southeast and directly east of this piece. It was a condition, actually, of their operating permit that they are going to build a subdivision there. So there's, there's no onus or no specter whatsoever of that pit being abandoned.
Okay, so you're hooking up to water. There will be available hookup to water, and you're, they're doing away with the borrow pit?
Correct, yeah. The borrow pit, as I said, is already in review for a subdivision.
Just want to make that clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And now we're in board discussion. Commissioner White, you recognize.
So this area is outside of the urban service area? Okay, and it's, and water will be available because it's developer-funded or how does that?
I'm not sure that we've worked through that, the water availability. You know that there's a water line on 579, and there is an ability in the code to have one point of connection for a property that's adjacent to a right-of-way that has a water line. I don't know the details of what Mr. Malloy was discussing, whether that's a plan to wrap that in with the adjacent subdivision, but there is, there is ability to make one point of connection for an adjacent water line to a property.
Okay. And what about the concerns that have been raised about setting some type of a precedent in future, with respect to future land use cases?
Commissioner, what I would advise on this case is there is 1 to 2.5, which this is existing. However, it is adjacent to a fairly large area of RES 1 planned land. So to this, to this making, being a precedent for land on the other side of 579, I wouldn't agree that the Board would be obligated to approve future plan amendments if this were approved, particularly given the different development pattern on this side of 579 versus the east side.
Okay. This is obviously a transmittal meeting, so the Board will look at this again.
Yes.
And this is a legislative process, so these citizens can reach out to Commissioners and give us more in-depth information on, if this, if this transmits tonight, they can reach out to Commissioners and give us more in-depth information on what their concerns are and, you know, what the issues at hand are, right?
Yes, that's correct. Part of a legislative process.
Okay. With that being said, I don't see any harm in getting this transmitted tonight. I would like to hear more from these citizens and better understand the concerns, but, Madam Chair, I moved for transmittal. I think I got a second.
Yes, you did. Excuse me. Commissioner White moved to transmit, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham. I do want to remind everybody, a second public hearing and final vote will be held before it is finally adopted. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. For staff, what does it mean not to meet locational criteria?
The plan sets out parameters. Generally, it has to be on a, at an intersection look identified on the cost-affordable map in the MPO plan. If you don't meet that, there are waivers, but it's very difficult to receive that. In this case, they're not even fronting on the highway. They get access from a local road, and Joe Ebert Road is, it's less than a mile, but it, it just would be difficult to meet the locational criteria.
Can you, because of the, the location on the road, can you just clarify that a little bit?
The locational criteria sets out a distance from the intersection and the type of road, and that determines the amount of square footage that can be located at that intersection. This does not front on a road, and it's not near an intersection.
Isn't that for commercial, though?
It's for non-residential.
Right, it's for non-residential uses.
Yeah, that's for, that's for commercial, not residential.
Right, oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's only for non-residential uses.
Right.
I have concerns, and I appreciate Mr. Parker coming down to give us some history, and also Karen to elaborate on this. As we all know, we've heard from the ULI that told us to respect the line, the fact that we're making piecemeal changes, this is a Comprehensive Plan for a reason. Seems like we should be making these in a unified thorough way with thoughtfulness and predetermination in a way that, how we develop the rest of the county. I have concerns again. It's over the urban service line in the rural service area. We're increasing density. I think it, I mean, we've seen it over and over again, whether we say it creates precedent or not. This happens over and over, that one place is changed, just like Mr. Parker says, and then the other places are all opened up to point to the contiguous change and point to that as a reason why they also should be developed in that way. I don't think this is a good idea. It's premature. I think that timeliness is a really good point, and that we should be waiting until a time when, when this makes more sense. So I'll be voting no as we move forward.
Okay, thank you very much. We have, is there any? We have a, is there any further discussion? We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham, to transmit CPA eighteen dash zero three. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried five to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
And now, I need a motion and vote for the resolution for transmittal of the amendments that have been approved for transmittal. Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried four to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
Okay, thank you all very much. Does that conclude our business?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, we are adjourned.